The Finance Committee. And turn it over to the Chairman, who's late. Chairwoman, I'm sorry. Chairwoman.
Chairperson.
Chairperson. Well, it's on the sheet here, it says Chairwoman.
Okay, we have one item on the agenda for Finance Committee. It is a resolution amending the 2023 budget for the Springdale Police Department to supplement the implementation of the Arkansas Full-Time Law Enforcement Officer Salary Stipend Act of 2022. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath. And this will be presented by Police Chief Frank Gamble. Thank you.
Yes, if you guys will remember, last year I came to you and asked them in the budget for 2022 to allow us to receive stipend for all our full-time officers at the Springdale Police Department. This Act, Act 224, requires that we come back to council and amend our budget for this year. We had six officers that received the stipend right at the end of last year, and they weren't able to get the checks cut through payroll until January. So those six officers are included in this amendment to change the budget. And also, there's five officers that just recently graduated the academy that were applying for the stipend for them as well. So the total change in our budget would be $59,207.50, and none of that money will come out of the city budget. That's all coming from the state.
Move the resolution before the recommendation for approval.
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to forward the resolution to council with recommendation for approval. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that closes the Finance Committee.
We'll open up the Ordinance Committee meeting. We have one item on the agenda, and it's a ordinance to be presented by the Chief of Staff explaining why the citizens of Springdale should be continued to get ripped off by not having competitive bidding and provide preferential treatment for certain services.
Well, I'll try to explain the correct version of that. The State of Arkansas allows municipalities the opportunity to procure professional services. And so we're wanting to amend our ordinance to create a new opportunity to make purchases that are significant, large purchases for the city. One thing we realized when we were doing the solid waste contract is that there's really not an avenue for municipalities that don't have experts working on staff in certain areas, just like we didn't have expertise in solid waste. There's some purchases that cities need to make that are hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, that we don't have experts on staff to know, you know, if we're getting a good deal. And we found that just because we buy something on the buy board doesn't mean it's the best deal either. It's not the cheapest deal. In fact, we bought our fire, some of our trucks for the fire department, the pickups. We got a better deal than was on the buy board by looking at prices. So we've worked with the Arkansas Municipal League, and we want to add to our professional services a procurement consultant. And whenever we find a purchase that we need to make that's significant, we want to be able to bring in someone's expertise, just like we did with the solid waste contract. What we're going to propose in these contracts to this procurement consultant is that we're reimbursed, just like we are on the solid waste contract. Let me give you an example of how this would work. This is a real-life example that happened last week here with the City of Springdale. We've been getting some quotes on a project that we're wanting to do in the bond, and I won't go into detail on what companies they are, but we got part of our quote for some turf was going to be north of $800,000. So I called someone I know that is very familiar with turf and got a different quote from the same company, and it ended up being just over $400,000 because they have that buying power. So that shows you, we could save three, maybe $400,000 by going this direction. What they'll do is they'll go in and do an RFP, Request for Proposals, through various companies like turf companies, and then whenever we select the one that's most beneficial to the city, that procurement consultant will walk us through that entire process, and they'll make sure that we're getting exactly what was in the RFQ or the RFP. They'll just kind of an advocate that'll protect us to make sure we're getting exactly what we want to pay for. And at the end, if it's not the cheapest, then we'll have the ability to waive competitive bidding if we feel like something will last us longer and bring us a greater value that way. So that's what we're proposing, is to change our ordinance so that it will allow for procurement consultants, and I think it's going to save the city millions of dollars.
Is there a, is there a limit to, like, a cap on an amount of a project that we would use these, or is it just by the type of project? Or is it, is it dependent on how much a project is?
So the, this could also be not just for, for buying certain items, but also, like, we have what we call an EAP, an Employment Assistance Program. It's a contract that we pay every year, and we're wanting to put that out, and we're going to use somebody that understands EAPs to put this together for us. I don't, that one's not going to be significantly a high number. We usually pay about $10,000 to $12,000 a year for that. So we could use it for small projects like this, or really what I'm looking at using this for is larger purchases, to see if there's better deals out there. But we need to use somebody that's a professional in that industry, so that we're not just buying off the buy board all the time and assuming that is the best deal.
Let's, let's talk about your turf example for a minute that we ran into. Part of this would also be the ability to write the specs that park staff may not have the ability to do. And, and so it's a, it's a, it's a advisor, so that we're sure we're getting a good, we're specing a good product that is going to serve, to serve the city the best.
Yeah, when we first started talking about turf, we sat down with Chad, and the guy said, "Do you want coconut bead? You want rubber pellet? You want..." And he went down the list, and we all looked at each other and said, "We have no idea." And he said, "Well, I'll sit down and meet with you and find out all of your needs, what you're looking for, and we'll get the best warranty, the right stitching. There's a pitch rate, a spin rate, an infill." Those are all things that nobody on staff is an expert in, and we really need somebody to come in on our behalf that can walk us through and make sure we're getting what we need and what we paid for. So there's going to be a lot of opportunities for this. So anytime we make a larger purchase, we, we want to look at the option of using this service.
And it, it's actually a tool that the statute gives us that has been underused, in my opinion. I think the last time we designated something a professional service was in 2011, when we designated appraisal services as professional service.
So we have engineers, architects, engineers, architects, appraisers, and I think land surveyors are the things that we have designated, but the state allows for more categories. We're actually creating a category, and the Municipal League is on board with this. We ran it past Lanny and John Wilkerson. They love the idea, and they think it's going to save cities a lot of money. But we'll be the first ones to do it.
I'll move ordinance pass recommended for approval.
Say it.
Uh, any further? I've just mesmerized by his presentation. I've never understood how we could get ripped off so easily and make it sound so good. Any further? Yeah, any further discussion? All those in favor of this ridiculous ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Unfortunately, it'll be forwarded to council for recommendation for approval.
As always, we appreciate your strong and my support.
Oh, no problem, Mayor. Glad to serve. Does anyone else have anything to come forward to the committee? If not, I guess we stand adjourned temporarily.
Well, it's hard to follow stuff like that, but I'm going to go ahead and open up the Police and Fire Committee. Chief, can, is there any way we can top that? I don't know.
Not going to try.
Chief's going to talk to us about our risk assessment standard review.
Yeah, so our accreditation is on a five-year cycle, and as part of that process, we're up for reaccreditation this spring, and we'll go before the, the board in August for that reaccreditation hearing. Part of that process is that we have a current and updated risk assessment and standard of cover. And so I'm going to turn this over to Chief Dustin McDonald, who's our compliance and accreditation officer, and he'll go over the contents of our risk assessment standard of cover, and then if you've got any questions, we'll be here for that.
I promise this is the 30,000-foot view. I'm going to try and be as quick as possible to get through this, but what you have in front of you is basically a detailed assessment of the risks we've identified for fire EMS, technical rescue, and hazmat, and what we've accepted as our standards for the coverage for those services and the support services that go with them. The accreditation model requires that everything we do is mission-driven, based off our mission statement. Our mission statement is to save lives, protect property, and minimize the effects of the, of all emergencies in the City of Springdale. The purpose of this standard of cover, again, is to help identify a proper service the city needs and approve those services currently provided through reducing response times, ensuring appropriate staffing, and providing sufficient appropriate equipment. What we're looking for is, are we sending the right apparatus? Are we sending the closest apparatus? Are we sending the right number of people? Are we sending the right number of apparatus for an alarm? Should we only send one unit? Should we send more units for a, for a large fire or things like that? And, you know, not is it, not only does it benefit from a cost savings, but, you know, if we were to send more apparatus than we need, and if somebody was to get into a wreck and hurt, that's definitely not the image we want to portray. The accreditation model has 11 different categories that we go through. Governance and administration is how well the department works with you all. We have a great working relationship. That was probably one of our easiest categories to write. The assessment and planning is part of our standard of cover and our risk assessment, and what we deem the department's needs are based off of that. The goals and objectives, that's our strategic planning. Financial resources is where we deal with how we use our money. It's pretty straightforward. Our support services, Community Risk Reduction Program, domestic preparedness, that's a big part of it. Ironically, when you get into the accreditation model, the fire EMS, technical rescue, and hazmat parts of it, firefighter mentality is pretty straightforward for us. There's not a whole lot of stuff that we write to. The 254 performance indicators, I think 12 of them are related to those categories. The rest of it is how the city and the department work together. So, physical resources, our stations, our apparatus, our protective equipment, things like that. Human resources, again, one of the larger categories, is how we're working with our people and the city's working with them. Training and competency, our essential resources, our relationships with the water department, with dispatch, our administrative services, and our IT department. And then our external relations, our mutual automatic aid agreements. And then the new big one is firefighter health and safety, and that's a major push that I have. But parts of the risk assessment, the city and the department history. We go through our goals that we've accomplished over the last several years and show how we work with the city. We do a detailed description of the area, get characteristics, and the programs and services. We take into account the community feedback we've gotten through surveys and through meetings with citizens and with the department members. Our goals and objectives that we've established out of the strategic plan. Our current deployment and performance, we'll elaborate on that here in a minute, and our critical tasking that we require for the incidents and current deployment evaluation, plan for maintaining it, and all the good stuff at the end. Again, I apologize for 300 pages. It's not ideally what I would like to give you, but that's all the data that they require in there, so. The city history, department history, station locations, significant department events. The main thing is the characteristics, topography, the terrain, the climate, and how that affects our delivery of the emergency services. The programs and services we evaluate, our fire suppression, our EMS, our technical rescue, Risk Reduction Division, and disaster preparedness is, again, a new, not a new push, but one of the big pushes the commission's going for right now due to the, the way of the world, it seems. Our training, our logistics and accreditation, those are, we're all support services to the main mission of the department, which is fire EMS, tech rescue. Community feedback, we've gotten feedback through, like I said, the surveys we sent out, web-based survey. We've sent out surveys to department leaders, getting their feedback, is what they expect from the department. What do they, you know, is acceptable response times? What would they like to see the department do moving forward? A complete strength witnesses, or strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. And we incorporate all that into our strategic plan, which we go through and edit every year, and publish, all that's published on the city's website. One of the things we identify through the risk assessment, department, risks the department faces, we break them down by our FMAs. We're actually going, FMAs are fire management areas for clarification. I apologize if I throw the lingo out, but right now we have nine FMAs. We're actually going to break the risk assessment down into further quadrant areas based off of our CAD. But it just gives, each little area has its own individual characteristics. Station eight, real heavy industrial area. Station four is very residential-type area. So we try and identify all that. We break them out, down into four risk categories. Low risk is the stuff run-of-the-mill, not much is going to happen on those types of incidents. We usually respond non-emergent to those, moderate, little bit increase. Maximum is where most of the stuff you guys hear about are structured fires, large EMS events, things like that. And then our high special would be commercial fires, large technical rescue, large hazmat events, and things like that. We identify them based on the infras coating system, which is pretty simple and straightforward. We give, they give us a series of numbers that we can categorize each type of those incidents in, and it's pretty straightforward as far as how they fall into EMS, tech rescue, fire, and things like that. So we identify our target hazards in those areas as well. Main thing we look for is critical infrastructure, anything with a high loss of life potential, you know, large gathering areas, hospitals, nursing homes, any major loss of property. You know, we've had two pretty significant fires in the last few years that, large, large loss of property. Loss of income is one of the things, you know, if we have an industrial complex that catches fire and is out of service, you know, we take into account that people are going to not have jobs temporarily, that we're not going to have the tax base and things like that. And any type of incident that might deplete department resources if we have to send two and three and four alarms and having to draw our neighboring departments and to help cover the city. Like we were talking about, for our risk levels, the angles here, the low-risk fire side, we have passenger vehicle fires, you know, trash fires, things that require a single engine. Structure or moderate risk would be outbuildings, things like that. We generally don't have to have what we consider a full alarm assignment, which is four engines, a ladder truck, a medic unit, and a battalion chief. Those reserved for the maximum risk are residential structure fires, our basic commercial structure fires. And then our highest, high special would be fires and identified target hazards, large commercial fires. And with our CAD capabilities, we're getting to where we can really drill down on what some of those risks are. And just showing we take into account the past five years of data based on the counts of incidents, and these are the infras codes we were talking about, and these are strictly the fire codes. We take that into account, and that's part of our frequency analysis. Same with EMS, moderate is where you guys see us at most of the time, on the road, you know, an engine and a medic unit. The maximum is when we have larger, you know, multiple vehicles, you know, different things like that. And again, you can kind of see where we're at the last five years. General medical, unfortunately, that's the way it clumps in on there, but trauma's a big, trauma and behavioral are big, showing big trends throughout the city and increases, and I don't see that changing anytime soon. So that's something that we're looking to, to kind of address. The big thing out of the standard of cover is our total response time. There's four different elements that go into that. The first due unit and effective response forces are terminology that we use to, obviously, to get the first unit on scene that's capable of starting mitigation. And then the effective response force is all the units that we have on scene for, to complete the mitigation of the incident, the four engines, the ladder truck, all that. The call, the elements of that response time, the first part is the call processing time. That's when dispatch picks up the call, takes all the information, goes to the pro-QA line of questioning, and then tones us out. And then the turnout time is when we get the alarm at the station or through location, when that gets going, and from then until when our units mark responding on their iPads. And then the travel time is from when they mark responding until they get on the scene, and then that factors into the total response time. And the, the accreditation body measures the total response times for the first due and for the effective response force. And we do that for each level of risk, for low, moderate, maximum, and high for fire EMS and tech rescue and hazmat. And we go through that, and we measure to the 90th percentile, so what our acceptable rate is. Trying to, I missed a slide here, but the 80th percentile is our benchmark standard. So our 90th percentile is if we were to have 10 calls, nine of those times we make it out in under 60 seconds for our turnout. That's that 90th percentile mark. We don't use averages because in the fire data analysis world, averages can get thrown off if somebody's in a rig and goes responding. That's technically not a accurate measurement of what we're looking for for turnout times. And there's so many different factors that the 90th percentile is a lot more accurate for, for our data collection. To establish our benchmarks, which is our goals that we're trying to meet for that, we use an 80th percentile method that adjusts year to year. So whatever our 90th percentile time is, the 80th percentile time, which would be less, excuse me, is what our goal is moving forward, and that's a dynamic goal that will shift every year, depending on where we're at on that. So, part of what we're looking for is our critical tasking for these incidents. This is just an example of a maximum risk fire incident. What amount of personnel we will need to complete all the critical tasks that are required for an incident. You have, our battalion chief is our command and scene size up. You have our initial fire attack units, which would be two personnel. Our pump operator would be that third person on the first engine. You have your secondary attack lines, water supply, our rapid intervention. You can see it just kind of snowballs into 18 people for a scene, and that's where it's our responsibility to send the right apparatus and the closest apparatus to these types of incidents. We talked about the 90th percentile. I apologize, had slide get flip-flopped there. But if you look at our maximum risk fire suppression right now, you can see in 2022, these are our, the far column there, our numbers for getting an effective response force on scene. And, and we evaluate, with the accrediting body, we talk with them frequently about what's, some of the trends and things like that, that they can offer their opinions on to help us out, and they do evaluate us for any major changes or anything like that. So, almost there. Out of that, we establish our goals, what we, what we found out in the risk assessment, what we found out in our standard of cover. We establish our goals out of that, and again, establish our benchmarks, and through the strategic planning, we develop our compliance strategies, which we review these times monthly. We're looking at changing our records management system to where we can have almost instantaneous updates on this. Instead of having to do it on a monthly, we can, just at the click of a button, be able to look at that. But, and then again, communicating these expectations to you all, getting your approval, and then it's just a continuous circle that we go through every year and every five years as a whole. That, I tried to, tried to make it brief. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions off to the side. I don't want to draw it, draw it out too long.
So Dustin, when do we, like, I know Chief said in August. I know y'all will be there presenting.
Right.
When and then do we find out? How long does that process usually work?
So the peer team will be in northwest Arkansas, June 11th through the 14th. We take them around to all the department, all the stations, the water department, and discuss, and they do their assessment of what we've gone through. And from that point on the 14th, we'll either get the recommendation for, you know, a deferral or for, if they recommend us for accreditation. And at that point, we'll go in front of the, the hearing at the commission on August 30th. I was going to send you an email today because we just got the official schedule.
Okay.
But, and that's where they'll do the, the hearing like you went to in Dallas with us, and we'll know, know for sure then.
Okay.
It's getting down to it. Thank you all.
Thank you. This is very involved.
All right. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to make a motion that we move the resolution to council with recommendation for approval.
Say it.
I have a motion and a second to move this forward recommendation for approval. Thank you, guys, for your hard work. Really appreciate you all and all of our fire department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It will be moved forward, and I will close out the Police and Fire Committee.
All right, we've got a couple items that we listed as committee in the hole.
Can I, can I move mine, table mine, for two weeks from tonight?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. I'd like to table my discussion for Lakeview and Dearing Road Traffic Studies for two weeks from tonight.
Do we need a, we don't need action?
No.
All right, and then we've got a discussion on the update, the Form-Based Code. Now, let, go ahead and start out clearly a bit. This is what's going to go to Planning Commission.
That's correct. This is merely informational. If you guys and gals have questions for me, I'm just going to go through some of the more major points of what is being updated in the Form-Based Code.
Whatever Planning Commission comes out, comes out of Planning Commission, we'll come back to council.
That's correct. Next, next Tuesday, I believe, that's May 9th.
For adoption. Yes, for adoption. So you're just going to kind of hit up, hit the highlights of what changes they're going to be considered, right?
Absolutely. Let's see. So some stuff is just kind of cosmetic. There were a couple spots in here where we had one story and 15 feet, and that was very confusing and really didn't make a lot of sense. So we changed that to one story or 15 feet, and that's for your ground level. We've included things like row house and courtyard row house and your building envelope standards, and so this kind of diversifies the options available to property owners and developers. We've made some changes to the parking lot requirements as a result of a focus on walkability and the intention of working toward a parking structures downtown as outlined in the downtown master plan update. We've included cottage court special. Uh, we've included cottage court special overlay district. Uh, it's much like some of the other updates I've referenced. This will diversify the development options of property owners and developers. And we have at least one, uh, looking to do this upon passage of this update. So, we're pretty excited to see that come together. There will be in those courtyards, uh, specific spacing between the structures and will require fire department approval. And piggybacking on that, um, reference a moment ago, uh, page three thirty-three in, in your packet there of, or I'm sorry, rather, the form-based code portion of your packet. Uh, we've got private drive standards and site layouts that, again, those will be, uh, oftentimes deferred to the planning or the fire department for their call. And then finally, in terms of signage, uh, pages four dash fifty-seven and four dash fifty-eight outline sign standards based upon the nature of the district, meaning residential, campus, mixed use and so on. So, if you have any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer those or I can be sure to get you those answers tomorrow.
On, on Emma Street and, and Main Streets, uh, down through there that, that commercial structures are on and, and specifically retail?
Yes, sir.
On parking, what, do we have any, uh, any rules or anything about the residents parking in the, in, in front of commercial buildings, um, during business hours?
Um, I think that's more, that may be more of an earnest question off the top of my head. Do, do you know, do we have anything specific that would prevent, uh, a resident from parking in front of a business?
The city would have to write since it's a city street in front of a business to limit parking to those businesses only. But I hope that such as those conversations have been, it might be something going forward that might.
Well, we've never had residential on top of commercial and now we're having that. So, you know, I know in front of the cake shop, they've got, you know, this is just for loading, unloading or whatever she's got up there. But, you know, I, I, I've been hearing about residents of the building parking in front and maybe taking up spots that the businesses, uh, would like to have open. And I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but.
That is one of those things that will be, uh, addressed with parking structures because there will be opportunities, or more opportunities at that point for people to be able to park in the structures as opposed to directly in front of, uh, the commercial outlets as they are now.
Would you think it'd be beneficial to look at, like, during business hours, these spots are, are reserved for the businesses? And then after that, then people can park there, kind of like?
That, that's an option. I mean, we, it's kind of like there's no place to quit. I knew that, but what we've done in front of Shelby Lenz, we did it years and years ago when they were about the only business going down here. And they needed a way to load. Now, that block's going to all be done differently with the redevelopment of first security property. So, I don't know that those are going to need to stay. But we'll just have to, some of this stuff, we're just going to have to deal with as we need to. Now, the, the property, like the, the apartments over here that have the, like, on top of Bellas, there was some confusion, I think, on, on some of the residents' part, that they were being told some things that weren't right. But they do need to fill up. We, we told them, they need to fill up the parking that's built as part of that project behind before they park anywhere else. And, you know, that, we're just going to have to kind of monitor that and make sure. Everybody's going to have to play nice together as this downtown grows and is parking. But as Rick said, we're looking for opportunities to, uh, to create some parking structures over the next several years. And that's part of the downtown master plan.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so as those come online, it should help alleviate some of that. I don't want to ever get into a paid parking situation or, and I know y'all don't either. And, uh, uh, but at the same time, we've got, you mentioned as part of walkability.
Yes, sir.
That, that desire and how that, how that plays into parking. You know, we've got a lot of good parking downtown. And I think we just, in our minds, we think if we can't get real close to the place we want to go.
Right in front.
Right in front, then we don't, then there's not enough parking. When really, the same person would go up to the promenade or to Northwest Arkansas Mall and park and walk blocks and blocks to get to their, and, and we've got a lot of parking. Close, at, at least that close to anything they want to go to downtown. So, part of it's just getting that mindset that, that we do have a lot of parking. But we're, we need more and we'll continue to work on more. I know there are a lot of opportunities as we look at the bond issue and some of the improvements we want to do, uh, specific to downtown. We've got a lot of wide streets with a lot of opportunity for on-street parking, on-street angle parking that can get us, get us a lot of extra spots downtown. So, west part of Emma, Meadow Street is real wide, a lot of opportunities there, Hulcom, so.
So, if we do get people asking, who, who do we need to direct them to?
Ask specifically.
Asking about, about parking in front of their business and all that. How, does that go to traffic or is that?
We'll consider, but I'm, I'm going to be real hesitant to do anything about that. I think, because once you start, there's not a place to quit. And, and I think, I think people just thought of, uh, finding their place to park. And, and, but, but I, I do think if there's an apartment building somewhere, they need to take care of, they, they need, their parking needs to be filled up first. And we've not been seeing that happen.
I think my biggest concern is that if somebody leaves their car there for four days and on Emma Street in front of a business, you know?
And if, if something like that happens a lot, we're going to have to address that. And we'll have to address that, whether, whether it takes a, uh, some sort of change in what we do. But, but the police will have to address that. I wish I had a better answer for you. We're, we're going to grow into this just like, you know, it's, it's going to be new to us. We're going to have to, we're going to have to adjust on the fly.
True.
Yep. Anything else for Rick? Okay.
Thanks, Rick.
When will that come? If, do we know how long, is planning commission going to decide everything? Are they going to consider everything?
Yeah, they're, they're supposed to decide everything. I'm sorry.
So, it would be the second meeting, second council meeting before it comes back?
It would be the, the first unless there's a need to push it to be the second.
It, it probably should be the second because if we pass it as a, as a, like a technical code, the city clerk has to publish notice first, so probably the second.
So, it'd be on with the rest of the, what we usually get from planning commission?
Okay.
I've already got it drafted.
All right. Thank you all. If we, if we can talk about something, be sure you've got an email and some of, some of y'all have responded that can't be here on the, what day is that called week the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh of June. That was me that responded to the twenty-seventh of June.
Amelia, Randall and Brian.
Yeah.
Plan to be out of town. What we're, what we're considering that night is not only the crash contract, but also the bond, which the email was about the bonds. Do we, do we think the bonds could be postponed? Because that, that takes an ordinance. And we got to have enough here to do that.
Just takes five, does it not?
It, it depends on whether it's having emergency laws or not. Right. So, we would need six. But the, the trash contract?
Well, do we need a committee meeting on that before ordinance? I mean, before council?
On the?
Trash.
On the trash? Probably shouldn't.
We could bring the recommendation from the committee, uh, solid waste committee to a committee meeting if we wanted to have more time for the council to hash that out. We could.
I don't think we want to look at it the first time on that night.
So, yeah, you'll, you'll have already had, had it in your possession. We've got a calendar that was going to call for the, the first council meeting in July to award the contract. Because we're on kind of a tight timetable, but.
Well, let's put it, let's put it on committee, um, the Monday before that.
Monday before the twenty-seventh?
Uh-huh.
Well, but we got to make sure everybody else is here so we have a quorum to, to approve it.
Will everybody else? We can miss three, it'd be okay because it's passed by resolution, right? On the twenty-seventh?
At least, I guess.
So, if it's a resolution?
I get, I get it.
And I have to nail everybody down. You never know when somebody gets sick or whatever, but we can also have a Zoom launch.
We're mixing bond and trash here.
I, you're talking about trash right now. We're talking about trash right now.
Trash would be resolution, bond is resolution.
Okay. So, so if we go to committee, the Monday before, what would, what would that be? If, uh, if the council meeting's on the twenty-seventh? Be on the nineteenth, right? So, it'd be Monday, the nineteenth. But will we have, will we be ready for that?
If it's just a discussion, we should, uh, in theory, have all that lined out by that point.
But will they have the results of the committee's recommendation?
Uh, yeah, the committee will have the recommendation by that point.
So, that could, that would be enough to discuss in committee?
Yeah, because we'll, we'll have the final scoring done. So, whoever wins the final scoring, and that'll be, that'll be, I think, the first week of June, we'll have that done. So, uh, we should have time to bring that to committee on the nineteenth.
Okay. So, the big question then, talking about trash again, is when we have, when we have a quorum on the twenty-seventh? We know three will be gone.
I just checked, I saw the occasion, but I, I'm not leaving till twenty, twenty-nine, that's obvious.
Okay, so you could be here.
Well, five, five passengers.
Well, four plus, if we get down to four.
Yeah, because we, we have somebody coming in from Texas on this deal. So, we, we would need to.
That's the triple A dead week, that's why everybody's traveling.
Right. Is everybody else okay as far as you know? For the twenty-seventh?
As far as I know.
It's a tough day, that's why I had to.
Okay.
We can zoom if we have to.
We can zoom.
Yeah.
That's an option for any guy. Won't be from Hulcom. Yeah, but, but, uh, and I don't know, Brian, if you'll be where you can, you, you'll be able to zoom to if necessary?
I'd probably zoom it.
All right, y'all can zoom, you need to do that on Saturday. Okay, well, that's, so we'll, we'll move ahead on the twenty-seventh with trash. Have you, have you gotten to talk to Chef or Bob or Kevin about what that would do to us on our bond ordinance?
I think we've, we've got a lot more flexibility, but if we can zoom, we should be okay for the ordinance too.
So, we might leave them both on there?
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily have to go to committee because people would have voted. Y'all know what it, it's just, it's just an ordinance to allow us to sell bonds on that. But it is an ordinance, so we'll have to have six to do emergency laws. Okay, well, that, that tells us what we need.
Yeah, we can still proceed the same way.
So, early voting is this week, right?
Early voting starts tomorrow?
I have no idea. I have no idea. I just, well, I'll be in.
It, it changes. In Springdale, I think it starts out at, uh, at the American Legion Building, right? Is that right, Frank? Okay. And it's there for a couple of days and then it moves to Elmdale, I think.
County Clerk's Office, early voting begins Tuesday, May second, from eight to four-thirty. The American Legion starts Tuesday, May second, eight to four-thirty. It ends on the fourth at the American Legion. Let's see, Elmdale Baptist Church, early voting is Thursday, May fourth and Friday, May fifth, uh, eight to four-thirty.
Okay, so Tuesday and Wednesday in Springdale is at the American Legion Building on the corner of Johnson and Spring. And then?
Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
Or on Thursday and Friday, it's at Elmdale Baptist Church.
Yes.
Okay. And county clerk anytime this week.
That's right.
Uh, in Fayette.
Anna was looking into that this afternoon. She had a question on that. She called a Washington County election, or Benton County Election Commission and they didn't have an answer. So, uh, I don't think they ever found that, did they, Ernest? Weren't you in there?
They said he had to go to the, clear the courthouse.
Got to go to the Benton County courthouse to vote early. Okay. So, all right.
I have a quick question about Emma. Is, is the opening day for Emma, one of the business owners, he's told it's going to be July now, is that correct?
No. Ben, do you have an update or is it the same?
We're still operating after opening Emma, uh, May seven.
May seven.
We, we hope earlier, but May seven is insane.
Now, that won't open Hulcom where it's torn up, right? That'll be.
But right there in front of those businesses?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Now, the contract itself, the whole contract won't be done until late June, so that may be where.
Where it is, okay.
And that'll, that covers the Hulcom part, okay. Boy, it's looking great.
Hey, Mayor, I, I see Mike's not here tonight, I don't think. But, um, a couple of months ago, I'd asked someone to look into those signs there on, on the interstate.
Yep.
And I don't know what's taken so long to get back on that.
Uh, he gave an update.
They just said he was researching it, said it was complicated, been going on for a while, there'd been some lapse dates.
Mm-hmm. Is everybody familiar with what I'm talking about on those signs?
Yeah.
I mean, they, they look like billboards, kind of. I, I don't know if it's a billboard or a, or a sign or what, but.
I got the impression it was, uh, some of the permits had left, but they'd gone ahead and put them up anyway. And I think he was researching, I don't know.
Okay, well, can you ask?
We'll try to get an answer, yeah. I'll, I'll have him reach out to you.
Certainly our city attorney can discover that.
Somebody, yeah, okay.
Just review the.
Yeah, I'll make sure he follows up.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thanks, everybody.